All right, everyone ready to start the next meeting? Um. I'm going to call to order the school committee budget workshop for February 16th. If everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Um, we're here for our second budget workshop. Um, I know the superintendent had prepared a statement last time. I'm not sure, Lori, if you have another statement, you have anything you want to add before we turn it over to Mr. McNamie?
Just want to say that he did write that in his first paragraph that he and I have discussed your feedback from last week, and we absolutely honor everything that you've shared with us, your concerns regarding going to the 4% ceiling. And we very responsibly, I believe, did bring the ask for FY 2023 down to our goal was below 3.5, and we beat that 3.44% increase over the 2022 town appropriation of $7,384,573. And with that, and all of our services and all of our instructional upgrades, curriculum, resources, print, non-print, all of it has not, none of it has been affected. So we're pretty confident that this sort of whittling away of some of the pieces will still guarantee a world-class education for our children. And with that, I will ask, I think he has been elevated to panelist, Mr. McNamie, trying to find him.
Yeah, right here.
There you go, John. Take it away.
Uh, thank you, Lori. So we, um, we listened to some of your comments in the last meeting and it, I certainly felt that the committee wanted to be below the maximum request of 4%. There are some things, I think, happening on the town side in terms of their capital program and their potential to go out for a bond that I think is going to put some pressure on the budget this year as well, too. So there are other, other external factors that I think when we consider the school budget, taking that, those into consideration, I think that this will probably present itself as a reasonable request at this point. So what, what I did was I looked through the budget and looked at some of the assumptions that we had initially looked at, and based on that, I was able to reduce the budget by 41.5, which now brings the ask down to 253,883, which is a 3.44% increase over the prior year. So, so what I looked at is, we talked a little bit about the teacher coverages in the substitute line item, and I felt as though that based on that conversation, there might be a little bit of an overlap in some of the amount that we had budgeted in substitutes, and also the amount that I added for teacher coverages. So I was able to reduce that number by about $5,000. The technical professional services, the audit fee, we just finalized the audit, the bill came in. I went back to the original proposal, and the auditors had broke it out by hours for school and town. So based on that, I discussed the allocation to the school. Based on that formula, and the town administrator had agreed that that would be an appropriate allocation, which is somewhat lower than we had paid in the past and lower than what we had budgeted. So I was able to reduce that number by about 5,000 as well. The purchased other services, I reduced it by 14,000, which was the other district for special education students. That number I was fairly conservative on, looking at our current history and also looking at the past couple of years. I felt comfortable bringing that down to the $100,000 level. So that was a savings there of about $14,000. So the, the last item, and I just noticed there was a typo here on my capital in the, in my report. We reduced that by 17.5. We went from 42.5 down to 25,000 on the transfer for capital reserve. And again, that was the amount that we were going to kind of set aside to help us to put some money aside so we can do those capital projects in the future. So we reduced that number from 42.5 to $25,000. And the sum of those was a reduction of 41.5 in the overall operating budget expenses based on the preliminary budget that was presented at the first budget workshop. So if there's any questions on these or any other items on the budget, I'd certainly be glad to entertain those, those questions.
Thank you, Mr. McNamie. Does anyone have any questions on the committee?
I do.
Go ahead, Mike.
John, what, what does that do as far as Trent, as far as lowering the allocation from 42 down to 25? Well, from 42.5 down to 25, as far as the, the long-term plan, what, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I think that if, if we look at some of the, the funds that might be coming in from the Newport County Regional Special Ed on the fund balance side. I'm hoping that we have some money coming for FY 21. So the FY 20 money, assuming the school committee agrees to set that aside. I think I've got some money that will be coming for FY 21. I just don't know what that number is. I'm hoping it's probably going to be close to $20,000. So I still think we could probably look at that target over the next couple of years of getting to that. A $250,000, $250,000, which then allows us to do a $500,000 project. And that's the goal, because if you do the $500,000 project, that's going to maximize the bonus incentives that'll be coming back to the, you know, to the, to the school. The other thing, Mike, is at this point, I know that they're going to refinance the existing school bonds as well. And those school bonds are going to be refinanced, and the debt service is going to be lowered. I'm waiting to see what that number looks like, because then my request might be to the town is that since you've already got this in your tax base and you've got that debt service in there, if you're going to lower that, give us that money for our capital program, since it's already built into the tax base at this point. So I haven't been getting a warm reception by the town on that one, but at least it's still out there. And that's an opportunity, I think, for us to, to maybe enhance that capital reserve fund balance as well, too.
I, I, I wonder what our legally, if we can do that, can we, can we take that money back to the town? If they're, if they're refinancing to save money, I mean, is, is that just a request? There's, there's no guarantee at that point for that?
Well, when you look at the, the financial town meeting, the taxpayers voted that bond to be spent on school, on school, on school capital projects. So I, I think it's only appropriate that if there's any savings, that those savings can be reinvested back into the schools. I, I don't see where, where that's going to be an issue. I mean, I, I run across this in, in Lincoln where we had a bond premium. So we had a big bond premium on the sale of the bonds during the, the renovations at the high school just recently. Well, we went to bond council, and bond council agreed that the town voted to borrow X amount of dollars for the schools. Uh, and, and said that based on that, any premium that we got over and above the sale of the bonds would have to be used for school projects. So I think there's some precedent for that. And, um, you know, I think that the town might be willing to, to take a look at that, especially if, at this point, it's not going to have any impact on the, on the tax rate.
Can you just elaborate a little bit more on what you were speaking of as far as it's going to be going off at the financial town meeting? As far as there was another bond you referring to, or you referring to the same one for the financial town meeting?
No, the town is looking at, they approved, I believe, $2 million of projects at the last financial town meeting.
Right, yes, it was.
So now they're looking at trying to fund that. They, they, initially, they were going to fund it through their operating. But in order to get these projects jump-started, it made a lot of sense, especially now with interest rates being at a low, to potentially borrow the 2 million, do the projects, and then have that debt service built into the tax base over the next, they've got various options, either 7, 10, or 15. So that's something I think the town council is actually looking at tonight. So, you know, that's, that's on the horizon. And again, as you know, the town certainly has a lot of capital needs if you've been to town always recently. And so I think that there, uh, it's, it's a good way to kind of get some of the projects complete in the town, too. So, uh, at this point, you know, there are a lot of moving parts because you've got an increase in value, not necessarily because of the revaluation, but new construction. So you have new monies going on the tax rolls that, that can mitigate tax increases as well, too. So they're kind of working through all those variables now. And obviously, by the time the financial town meeting rolls around, they'll have a, a tax rate set, but.
How does that, how does that potentially affect us at the school if the town does that thing? And they say, oh, we're going to borrow the, the 2 million, $2 million or whatever that, and never decides. How does that affect us directly as a school?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't affect us, it, it, well, it affects the town from the standpoint, they're under the same statute that they can't go to the taxpayers and ask for more than a 4% increase in what they're going to, the taxes that they're going to levy on, on the residents of Little Compton. So if, if they levy a tax of, let's say, $13 million, they can only ask for 4% more than that $13 million levy. So when we come in with the 4% increase over what is being funded by the taxpayers, which is the town appropriation, that, and, and we're the largest, obviously, department within the town. You know, that, that has an impact on the overall town ask in terms of what they can go to the taxpayers and look, look for, for an increase. But they also have a value increases so that the property valuations, other than the revaluation, the new property coming on are going to generate additional taxes that can offset, you know, some of the needs that they have in their operating budget. So they could conceivably commit at a 4% and still make the debt service payments and everything else that they're looking to do town-wide. Or come, come somewhere less than that. I think, I think they certainly would like to come in less than that, but it's a little early to tell, they're still working through their numbers at this point in time, so.
I guess one of my concerns and thought processes is, um, where we're at right now as far as this number. I think you said it was, is approximately $253,000 increase, is that, is that right?
Correct, correct, yeah.
So of that 253, how much is that because of the, the increase in the high school level?
I think that was like 100, 102,000, maybe.
So you still have $141,000 increase up and beyond the increase of high schools, is approximately what we're saying?
Yes.
So I guess the, the concern would be is that, as everybody knows, it's not a secret that how we have a decline in, in enrollment, and our numbers keep going up as far as our budget is concerned. So I guess my question comes back to is that, and I know everybody keeps saying, well, it's the pandemic pandemic, but you know, there's been that portion of it that parents have pulled their kids out of school because they don't like the way things are going. So there's no guarantee that those are going to, those parents are going to come back, or those kids are going to come back. Because if they don't like the way that things run, what's the incentive for them to come back? So then I look at it and say, well, we can't blame them on the pandemic, and then we're going to expect our kids to return. So I guess my question goes down to is, I know at the last meeting, we were at 201 as far as attendance. Is there any, does anybody know what the homeschooling is at this point for how many kids are actually being homeschooled? That could potentially come back, things would be changed.
Well, that, that 201, too, is without preschool, right, Lori? We, we didn't put the preschool numbers in there. So they're fully intended on having a preschool, which could generate about 12 to 14 at, at a minimum.
May, Madam Chair. Thank you. Yes, we generally have a solid 15, 16, 17 or more for preschool. And that has not happened. Some of our parents and guardians just were a bit trepidatious when it came to releasing their three- and four-year roles into the school during the pandemic. So we didn't lose enrollment in, in, in any catastrophic way to homeschooling. But definitely, we did lose our, our integrated preschool. And we expect to get those kiddos back. We expect to pick up some more tuition kiddos. We did just pick one up, a new registrant for next year, I believe, from Westport. So we, you know, we could get to 220 or, you know, anywhere from 218 to 230, who knows? Fingers crossed that we bring everyone back, our we ones, and all of our students being instructed at home as well. It's a family choice, and we honor that. But just preschool alone could help us recover, you know, just this pretty precipitous dip that we've experienced since 2020.
You, you're referring to the pre-K where that's the one-on-one peer program? Is that what you're referring to?
Preschool and pre-K, so we have a, you know, a three, three-year-old group in the morning, and I think I reversed it. You know, one, one group in the morning, and then one group in the afternoon, preschool and pre-K, they're separate programs. Yes, it's integrated, so some of the students have vulnerabilities, and they're with their age-level peers, and it is a science-based, research-based paradigm. It's an incredible program with a lot of success, and we just have a handful right now, I think, three or four kiddos. That's about it.
The, what is the, what is the number that we have that our parents are doing homeschooling right now?
I don't have those numbers at my fingertips, Mike. But I can certainly get that information to you or throw it into the Friday memo. I'm not quite sure. We do have a new enrolling, who just came into town, and we have two more coming in, I believe, tomorrow. So, you know, our enrollment is on the upswing, which is a nice trend. You know, especially during these past few years. So I believe Principal McKinnon just gave me that information, and I encountered a new we one today, an elementary kiddo who just moved in. So enrollment in Little Compton is, it's difficult to predict. We all know that since 2010, since the last NASDAQ study, enrollment study, that, you know, there, there is a gradual decline that has been predicted, but hopefully, with some, with the housing trust, working on housing that's affordable, with the reimplementation of our full preschool and pre-K, and with the promise of new tuition kiddos and new families moving in. Yeah, I, I think we'll be in good shape.
So I guess my, my last concern is that, I mentioned this before, prior, prior to this budget season, I, I even mentioned it last year, was that I'm very weary about banking on putting in our budget, banking on tuition students coming in, and saying that we can count on that money because there's no guarantee that those students are going to come in, because anything changes, if family situations change, jobs change, what have you. So basically, what we're saying right now is that I believe in the budget that there was eight students into the tuition. So at $48,000 that you're banking on, that there's not a guarantee that you're going to get them. And my comment last year was that we don't bank on that, those numbers, and if it comes through, it comes through, and we're that much better. But my personal thought is that you should not be banking on money that you know that's not a guarantee. I felt that way then, and I still feel that way now. I don't, to me, I don't think that's financially responsible, but unless John thinks that he can make up 48,000 somewhere, if those, if those students don't come through. I don't know, I mean, John, what's your thought on that?
Well, I mean, worst case, we do have that 25,000 sitting in capital reserve, and we do have some funds at the, at the collaborative. So either way, it's going to impact programs, because it's going to impact our capital program, not educational, but the capital program. So, you know, that would be our fallback position. But, I mean, historically, over the last number of years, we've had a, a pretty stable group of tuition-paying students. So I can't imagine us going back down to zero in, in that regard, but.
If it dipped down to, what was it, five or six kids at one point recently? So again, that would be my reservation on this. And, and we don't know what the town's going to come back and say. With the, with the, when I say the town, if the people at the financial town meeting, we don't know what that's going to, that's what's going to happen either, right? Because if 3.5% is a big increase, and I've ma, I've made this comment before, that every year, we seem to be averaging a 2% increase over the past five years. Now you're going to come back at 3.5%.
Well, the tax assessment on my house went up like 50%, so I feel like they'll be able to find the money, at the very least. Moreover, I do share Mike's concern, though. People are not moving to Little Compton right now. It's not a step-up community, it is not a starter-home community, it is becoming a destination community. And I do have reservations that our numbers will grow, but I am not apprehensive about the money being available with the increases that I saw in my taxes. I know it's going to be, if you live out on Warren's Point, I'm sure they're getting hammered, too. So I feel like the money will be there, despite them changing the mill rate or whatever they're going to do to work out, like I said, this 50% increase. So, yeah. That's kind of where I feel with it.
I guess the, the, the other, the other part to that, Travis, is how do we go back? And we had this discussion in the last meeting, is how do we keep increasing our budget when we, our numbers keep going down? We can all say, oh, yeah, our numbers are going to come back. Well, I can also say that I'm going to win the lottery, too. We don't know that, we don't know what our numbers are actually going to come back. We can, you know, we can guess what they're going to come back at, but.
I agree with you, Michael, I, I operate like you do. I'm saying that we're at zero, and any of those students that do bus in, they'll be, you know, we'll get compensated for. But I feel very comfortable about going down that road, knowing the assessment across the town has increased considerably, and there will be more dollars that flow through to the capital gains or whatever bottom line is necessary. I, I just can't, I mean, it wasn't like it went up $10,000. I mean, it went from, it's significant, significant, like the cost of, more than the cost that I paid for the house, it went up. And so that increase is going to flow through for every property like mine or better than mine. So I feel confident that the budget will work itself out with the steps that the council has made, the assessor has made, and then just kind of what the flow-through will get for this COVID blip. And then hopefully, if, you know, with mandates being lifted or things getting back to normalcy in 2022, certainly, towards the beginning of the school year in the fall, I, I think that we will see enrollment start to tick back when parents start to have a better understanding of how their routine is going to be. But I also, like I said, I'm tentative with you. I don't think we're going to go back to 250 kids, but I think that we do have some nice stopgaps with COVID coming to an end, the assessment moving up across the town, I think will be covered if any of these increases do arise.
Yeah. Just a hard, it's just a hard sell for myself. It's a hard sell just to, to tell people that we've got less people to teach, but we want more money. We want, we want, no, and I understand part, part of that is because of the increase to the high school, and I understand, I understand that portion of it, which that's a whole nother thing that we have to deal with, but the numbers have gone down since we started the school year. And now here we are, we're going to go back to them and say we want more. Not to say that the work that Lori and, and John have done by, you know, trying to decrease it by 41,000 is not a good start, but I wouldn't do it for my, it'd be hard for me to do it for somebody else's money. To, to say we want more, but we have less to, to take care of.
Does anyone have any more questions or comments from Mr. McNamie?
Holly, if I could, again, I want to, like, like Mike has said, great work on the part of the superintendent and the business manager to work these numbers. I, too, was concerned about that, that capital reserve, but you have quelled my fears and anxieties about that, Mr. McNamie. So thank you. And, yeah, I think the quality of and integrity of this school and what the children are offered in education, I think is certainly worth this money. And so I thank you again.
Anyone else? Any comments or questions from any of the attendees in the audience? I don't see any, Mariah, do you see any? Okay. So we will, just to clarify, we will adjourn this meeting as a workshop, and we will reconvene in a special meeting where we will decide whether we're comfortable on voting or whether we want to schedule a special meeting to give us some more time to consider this and vote at a later date. But we need to vote before the end of the month. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks. Vote by roll call, please, Mariah. Vote by roll call, please, Mariah.
Holly Allen.
Aye.
Travis Oddie.
Aye.
Hannah Eyer.
Aye.
Rita Cunningham.
Aye.
Mike Crocha.
Aye.
Great, thank you all. This meeting is adjourned. We are now going to